Okay, I'm going to call to order the Tuesday, April 5th, 2022, meeting of the Iredell County Board of Commissioners. At this time, I'd like you to please bow your heads in silent prayer, asking our Lord and Savior to give us protection and provision for our nation, and our state, and our communities.
My pledge of allegiance to the United States of America, and to the Father, who richeth us, one nation, under God, in the faithful, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everybody. Is it still raining outside? Yes, no. Okay. At this time, I'd like County Manager Moll to please review any adjustments to the agenda.
Thank you, Chairman Mallory. We do have a few different adjustments. First, under Presentation of Special Recognition and Awards, we have the addition of item 5.4, and that is the proclamation for National Library Week. Then, under Administrative Matters, we have the addition of item 8.13, and that is Departmental Salary Flexibility, and the subsequent decisions regarding the salary modification. Then, under Unfinished Business, we have four items. One item is the market study, and then we have two items presented by Commissioner Haupt, and one item presented by Commissioner Brown.
Are there any other adjustments to the agenda? Is there a motion to approve the agenda as adjusted?
I have one more. We have one actionable item out of closed session. Attorney Clark.
Okay.
Okay.
Excuse me?
He said motion to approve.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Norman to approve the agenda as adjusted. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion passes unanimously. For the record, Commissioner Norman is participating remotely, so sometimes there is a delay between when we call for a vote and when he is able to chime in, based on the delay in transmission, although he's been hitting the mark pretty quickly this evening. And I don't know if the electrons are moving faster tonight or what. Okay, so, we have several important presentations and special recognitions this evening. The first is a request from the Emergency Communication Center to proclaim April as 9/11 Education Month, and April 10 through 16 as National Telecommunicator Week for 2022.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Ms. Moll, Ms. Anderson, Ms. Valdez. I would like to start with thanking all of you for allowing me to speak to you this evening in reference to National 911 Awareness and Education Month, as well as National Telecommunicator Week. To say has been a very trying year just may be a small understatement. Our team of dedicated telecommunications at ECOM have been hit hard with round two of the pandemic, as well as the normal daily tragedies our county has faced head-on. Our team has reached out to schools, public outreach is when permitted, and through social media to educate the public on 911 services. In 2021, Iredell County communications handled 88,607 911 calls, 244,574 non-emergency calls, and we had over 3,078,367 radio transmissions. Mr. Chairman and members of the board, being the unofficial true first responders, we often hear the cries for help. However, in most cases, we do not get the closure we desperately need. While most of the community is enjoying dinner with their loved ones on Easter, Thanksgiving, and Christmas, our telecommunicators are eating dinner at the break room when time allows. While most of our community is enjoying fireworks and bonfires for New Year's, Memorial Day, and 4th of July, our telecommunicators are handling the newest complaints from these events. As telecommunicators, we do know the sacrifice that we signed up for. We knew that we would have to work during high-stress times and holidays. We worked countless hours of overtime, sacrificed many hours of sleep, and we have spoken to, we have been spoken to and about negativity. We have criticized, we have been criticized and verbally attacked, and I know I can speak on behalf of my coworkers by saying, we absolutely love what we do. Through all the challenges we have faced in 2021, we have held our heads up high and worked through the turmoil, proud to be a telecommunicator for Iredell County Emergency Services. So going forward to 2022, we are graciously asking you to grant us April 10 through the 16th as National Telecommunicator Week, and the entire month of April as National 911 Education Month. Thank you for your time, support, and consideration.
Thank you so much. Before we read the proclamation, do any commissioners have any words that they'd like to pass on?
Just to let you know how much we appreciate y'all, too.
Thank you.
Absolutely. And look forward to coming and visiting that week of your recognition.
We are so excited, but you have to come on evenings, because that's when you'll see us crazy ones.
Yes.
Do breakfast and then a dinner, so just come both times.
That'd be great, yes.
I don't want to miss anyone.
Thank you for all you do. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
I'm going to read the proposed proclamation. National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week, April 10 through 16, 2022. Whereas emergencies can occur at any time that require police, fire, or emergency medical services, and whereas when an emergency occurs, the prompt response of police officers, firefighters, and paramedics is critical to the protection of life and preservation of property, and whereas the safety of our police officers and firefighters is dependent upon the quality and the accuracy of information obtained from citizens who telephone the Iredell County Emergency Communication Center, and whereas public safety telecommunicators are the first first responder and most critical contact our citizens have with emergency services, and whereas public safety communicators are the single vital link for our police officers, rescue, firefighters, by coordinating their dispatch, monitoring their activities by radio, and providing them information and ensuring their safety. And whereas public safety telecommunicators of Iredell County Emergency Communication Center have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires, pre-arrival lifesaving instruction, and treatment of patients, and whereas each dispatcher has exhibited dedication, compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their job in the past year. Is there a motion to adopt this proclamation?
I'd be pleased to make that motion.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 The motion carries unanimously. Therefore, be it resolved that the Iredell County Board of Commissioners declare the week of April 10 through 16, 2022, to be National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week in Iredell County in honor of the men and women whose diligence and professionalism keep our county and citizens safe. Approve this 5th day of April, 2022.
Yeah.
So, if you all please come on up and...
My big, we need a picture.
And if I could get somebody behind me, get a good...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Here's the proclamation.
Okay, you're gonna have all that down low, or I'm sure.
Okay. Thank you all so much.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate everything you do, day in, day out.
Thank you.
Night in, night out.
Thank you.
National 911?
Yes.
Telecommunication, education.
I don't think there was a separate proclamation for that. I didn't have one.
Let me see. Look and see if there's a second one. The whole entire month of April.
Whole month.
Yes, sir.
Why don't we do that next week, the next meeting?
Okay.
Make sure it's still April.
Okay. All right, thank you.
We get, then you can get twice the exposure. Just add that to next month's agenda, next meeting's agenda, really. Next, we have a proclamation followed by a resolution, dealing with our Public Health Department, and I'm going to ask the Director, Jane Henson, to please come up to the podium, and if you would, Jane, if you would introduce your staff.
Okay.
And also, if you would like to read the proclamation, whereas portion, and then leave the therefor's to me.
Okay.
Sierra Ashworth is our new Public Information Officer, and she's actually going to read the proclamation. You all know Samantha Moose, our Preparedness Coordinator, and Renee Holland, our Executive Officer, and our my right-hand person, and Lisa Warren, who's Chairman of our Board of Health. So, I did want to tell you just a couple of facts about public health in Iredell County. On January 6, 1941, the Iredell County Board of Health was formed, and the Chair was actually the Board of Commissioner Chair, Commissioner John Long. I don't know if you've heard that name before. In 1943, the Board enacted a milk ordinance and started the registration of vital statistics, and in June of 1944, they dealt with the polio outbreak. It was very interesting. I have handwritten Board of Health minutes. They closed all public swimming pools, all camps, all picture shows, all public gatherings for children less than age 13. They let church continue, but the churches couldn't have young children attend because of the polio outbreak. So, here we are 81 years later with public health in Iredell County. So, I'll ask Sierra to read the proclamation.
Hello. This is for Public Health Week, April 4 through the 10th. Whereas, public health is about the science of protecting and improving the health of people and their communities. This work is achieved by promoting healthy lifestyles, researching disease and injury prevention, and detecting, preventing, and responding to infectious diseases. Whereas, as we look at this 27th anniversary of National Public Health Week, April 4 through the 10th, we know that public health professionals are needed more than ever before to protect against disease, injury, and death. Whereas, public health professionals help communities prevent, prepare for, withstand, and recover from the impact of a full range of health threats, including natural disasters and communicable disease outbreaks like pandemic flu, Ebola, and COVID-19. Whereas, as March 11, 2020, the World Health Organization declared COVID-19 a pandemic, and in Iredell County, the first case of COVID-19 was March 16 of 2020. The first COVID-19 death was April 8 of 2020, and as of March 8, 2022, there have been 47,939 cases and 438 related tragic deaths. Whereas, since March of 2020, the Iredell County Health Department team, alongside representatives from local, regional, and state agencies, businesses, and other healthcare providers and first responders, has worked passionately and tirelessly to mitigate the impact from COVID-19, and continues to detect, prevent, and respond to the pandemic to protect individuals where they live, where they learn, work, and play. Whereas, the Iredell County Health Department will continue to work alongside local, regional, and state stakeholders to assess complex issues and develop workable solutions to promote healthy people and healthy communities to create the needed foundation to improve the health, safety, and well-being of individuals living in Iredell County. Whereas, the Iredell County Health Department is equally dedicated to helping communities reach a better state of health by creating data-driven population health improvement programs and strategies to reduce infant mortality, substance use, including tobacco use and vaping, chronic diseases, communicable disease, and any future new or emerging public health threat.
A lot on your plate every day.
Yes.
Is there a motion to approve this proclamation?
I'd like to make a motion to make...
Let's just not make that motion.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Norman. Now, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously. Now, therefore, we, the Iredell County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim April 4 through 10, 2022, as Public Health Week in Iredell County, North Carolina, and call upon the people to observe this week by helping our families, friends, neighbors, coworkers, and leaders better understand the value of public health in supporting the great opportunities to adopt prevention lifestyles to live optimal lives. In witness whereof, this proclamation is hereby adopted this 5th day of April, 2022. So, if you all could all come up front. Hold that right in the middle.
I don't want to get in front of anybody.
You're short enough.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Oh, okay.
Thank you, ladies.
And not so fast. Y'all can, stay where you are. This is a special resolution, recognizing the incredible efforts and work of our Health Department team throughout the COVID-19 pandemic, and especially the leader of that team, Jane Henson. And so, together with the Board of Health and Chairman Lisa Warren is here with us this evening, we have adopted a joint resolution with the Board of Health, recognizing the entire Iredell County Health Department team. And so, do you want to read the resolution?
Doesn't matter.
Okay. You got the, okay. Well, I'll go ahead and read it, and then we'll grip and grin. Okay, this is a resolution by the Iredell County Board of Health and the Iredell County Board of Commissioners, supporting the work of the Iredell County Health Department during the COVID-19 pandemic. Whereas, the Iredell County Board of Health voted unanimously at their February 17, 2022, meeting to recognize the significant contributions made by the staff of the Iredell County Health Department during COVID-19 pandemic response efforts. And whereas, the Iredell County Health Director and Health Department team worked tirelessly to ensure COVID-19 was contained, traced, tracked, and treated in a manner to limit the spread of this deadly infection, thereby reducing hospitalizations and deaths in Iredell County. And whereas, the Iredell County Health Director, along with the Health Department team, have since the inception of the pandemic continued to work to provide crucial data and support so that scientists and medical experts could work to develop treatments, cures, and vaccines for COVID-19. And whereas, despite the Iredell County Health Department Director and Health Department team being subjected to intense criticism by some members of our communities who do not agree with the state and federal guidelines, they continue to work with integrity and focus on reducing the community spread of COVID-19. And whereas, the leadership of our Health Director and the diligence of the Iredell County Health Department team have been inspiring since the beginning of the pandemic, March 17, 2020. And whereas, the heroic efforts and sacrifices of our public officials, led by our Health Director, are deserving of acknowledgement and appreciation. At this time, is there a motion to adopt this resolution?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Commissioner Brown. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. And why don't you come on up, since I'll read it on both, behalf of both our boards. We, the Iredell County Board of Health and Iredell County Board of Commissioners, express great appreciation and heartfelt gratitude to our local public health officials and their selfless sacrifices and efforts to combat and respond to the unprecedented challenges facing our communities as a result of COVID-19. And Iredell County Board of Health and Iredell County Board of Commissioners recognize the value and dedication of our local public health officials to the viability, economy, safety, security, and well-being of our community, both through their outstanding performance during the pandemic and through their general ongoing work to keep our residents healthy and our communities vibrant and thriving. Adopted this 5th day of April, 2022. Signed, Lisa Warren, Chair of the Iredell County Board of Health, and myself as Board Commissioners on behalf of the Board. So, if you all would please come up.
Yeah, that's gracious.
Now, you get to hold that.
Thank you.
We get to put signs for her. Okay, we need, I need some balance over here.
Yes. I need some more girls.
I know, I just, I gotta take advantage of this opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Chairman, before these ladies sit down, if we could get y'all to stay there a minute, and get the ladies from the ECOM stand up, and our officers in the back, we'd like to applaud all of y'all, because we appreciate what y'all do for this county. We'll get all y'all in the building at the same time, very often.
Our final proclamation this evening is to proclaim April 3 through 9, 2022, as National Library Week. So, we have Julie Moore, who is our Director of the Iredell County Library System.
Yes, I'm a little unprepared, because this was such a fast way to get onto the agenda. The governor, yesterday, I received a proclamation from the governor that he had declared April 3 through 9 National Library Week. So, I shared it with Susan and Beth, and they made it happen for us to be... So I shared it with Susan and Beth, and they made it happen for us to be here tonight. So I appreciate that. And today is actually National Library Workers' Day. The American Library Association celebrates National Library Week every year. It's typically in April and the week changes, but today is actually National Library Workers' Day. And I just want to express appreciation for my amazing staff that I have that, over the course of the pandemic, has really been flexible to provide services and programs that they never imagined they would be providing when, before COVID came along, such as Kids Camp and how we're providing services virtually and all of that. But I appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight and to request April 3 through 9 to be declared National Library Week in Iredell County, too.
And we appreciate the fact that you're here almost every meeting we have with a grant written and received. So they all add up and they all provide a very specific service to our Iredell County residents. So this is a proclamation, whereas libraries are an accessible and inclusive place to foster a sense of connection and build community. And whereas libraries connect people to technology by providing access to computers, broadband internet, and training that is critical for assessing education and employment opportunities. And whereas libraries and librarians look beyond their traditional roles and provide transformative opportunities for education, employment, entrepreneurship, empowerment, and engagement, as well as new services that connect closely with patrons' needs. And whereas today's libraries and services extend far beyond the four walls of a building and everyone is welcome to use their resources. And whereas in times of crisis, libraries and library professionals play an invaluable role in supporting their communities, both in person and virtually. And whereas libraries serve to ensure equity of access for all, develop and maintain programs and collections that are as diverse as the populations they serve. And whereas, to adapt to our changing world, libraries are expanding their resources and continuing to meet the needs of their patrons. And whereas libraries are pioneers, supporting democracy and affecting social change with a commitment to providing equitable access of information for all library users regardless of race, ethnicity, creed, ability, sexual orientation, gender identity, or socio-economic status. And whereas libraries, librarians, and library workers are joining library supporters and advocates across the state of North Carolina and beyond to celebrate National Library Week. Is there a motion that we adopt the proclamation?
Mr. Chairman, make that motion that we make National Library Week April 3 through the 9th.
Motion by Commissioner Howe. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Now, therefore, the Iredell County Board of Commissioners do hereby proclaim April 3 through 9, 2022, as National Library Week in North Carolina and commend its observance to all citizens.
Thank you.
I'm going to do this one.
That's right.
No, no.
I'm gonna put her some axes on the floor so she can know where she's standing.
I'm a Republican.
All right, we'll move on to Item 6, Appointments Before the Board, and there are none this evening. Item 7 is Public Hearings, and we have a public hearing to consider an economic development incentive for Project Garden. And Ms. Jen Bozer is here from the Iredell County Economic Development Corporation to give us the lowdown, and then we proceed to the public hearing.
Thank you, Chairman Mallory and members of the board. I'm Jen Bozer, President and CEO of Iredell County Economic Development Corporation. And I'm pleased to present Liberty Turbine Services, also known as Project Garden, for consideration for an economic development incentive grant for their expansion of their existing facility in Mooresville. They're located at 2599 Charlotte Highway in Mooresville, and they're part of a liberty group of companies. They're a pioneer in the development of advanced metallurgical processes and technologies that solve challenges faced by the aerospace, nuclear, oil and gas, and energy industries. The Mooresville location specializes in serving, in servicing end-users of industrial gas turbines and aerospace engines, including the refurbishment of engine components. The proposed expansion includes increasing power capacity at the facility and the addition of new machinery and equipment. The company is also looking to bring many outsourced services in-house, and the expansion will allow Liberty to shorten lead times and enable the company to service a new line of product, which is the TF-33 military engine parts. While the company has primarily focused on industrial gas turbine and life extension technologies, they wish to expand their portfolio into the military sector and are doing so with their first military awarded grant, or I'm sorry, awarded project. In accordance with the Iredell County's economic development policy, Iredell EDC requests an economic incentive grant to Liberty Turbine Services LLC for up to $8,740 based on a capital investment total of $1.2 million and the creation of five jobs, up to seven. The grant is performance-based and would be payable over three years at 75% of new real property and 50% of tangible personal property assessed tax value. Payment is tied to the amount of the new incremental assessed value generated from the private investment by the company. The town of Mooresville also met yesterday for a public hearing and approved an incentive grant for the company. So on behalf of Iredell EDC, I want to thank the Board of Commissioners for your support and consideration of this grant, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Bozer. Are there any questions for Ms. Bozer? Is there a sign-up sheet? No one signed up? Okay, well, I will open the public hearing, and then I will inquire, since I don't have anyone signed up, if there's anyone here that would like to be heard on this matter. Seeing and hearing none, close the public hearing and ask if there is a motion.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve an economic incentive up to $8,740 over a three-year period based on the company's investment of up to $1.2 million, creation of up to seven new jobs, and contingent upon a contract being executed within 180 days.
Motion by Vice Chairman Neder. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Have a good night.
We will now move on to Item 8, Administrative Matters. These are all matters that are presented at our 5 o'clock pre-agenda meeting. They are normally items which are brought by staff that are of a technical nature, and we're able to hear them and then get them on their way so that they can leave at a decent hour and get back with their families. And as well, since they are fairly technical, most of them, it moves everything along a little faster during our regular meetings. So these matters, if our county manager, Mole, would please summarize those administrative matters for our consent agenda?
Absolutely, thank you, Chairman Mallory. The first item is a request from Iredell Statesville Schools to consider the right of first refusal for the Mountmoren School property. If that property is sold, then proceeds will go back into a project that has been recommended by the School Facility Task Force. A request from Cooperative Extension for Approval of Budget Amendment Number 39 to appropriate funds for the purchase of picnic tables and supply items for the new outdoor education picnic shelter. The amount of this is $11,200, and the proceeds, the money that we're using to pay for these and purchase these, is actually coming from unbudgeted rent proceeds that we've received for that facility. There's a request from the library for approval to submit a letter of intent to apply for a North Carolina Humanities Large Grant in the amount of $20,000 and a grant application, and this is for the Green Street Cemetery. A request from ITS for approval of a three-year contract with Spectrum for a data circuit. This is a redundant line, and actually, this rarely happens, but this more than doubles the speed of that, and it's at a cheaper cost than what we're currently paying. So that was a win-win. A request from Building Standards for Approval to Adjust Permit Fees for Shell Type Buildings. A request from Finance for Approval of an amended project ordinance for Mitchell Community College Health Sciences Building Project, and this is closing out that project. A request from Finance for Approval of Budget Amendment Number 38, Capital Project Ordinance, Fair Grounds, and to amend Greenway Project Ordinance to appropriate state capital and infrastructure funds and Department of Public Safety funds. These are all state dollars that our state legislators actually went to bat for us and received some state dollars to bring back home to Iredell County. So thank you to our legislators for that. A request from Finance for Approval of the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council Spending Plan for Fiscal Year 2022 and 2023. A request from Administration for Approval of the Iredell County Recreation Center Sewer Line Agreement Amendment between the county, Town of Troutman, and Children's Hope Alliance. This actually is just amending the contract contingent on the Town of Troutman's approval on April the 11th at their pre-agenda and then April the 14th. Request from Administration for Approval to Amend the ARPA Grant Project Ordinance to Increase the Appropriation for the Iredell County Recreation Center Sewer Line Project. This is due to the addition of upsizing that line for capacity and also the cost of the market and construction right now. A request from the Clerk to the Board for Approval of the Minutes for the Meetings on February the 17th, February the 18th, and March the 15th, 2022. The County Construction Project's update was presented to the Board just for informational purposes, there were no action items on that item. And then there was one addition to the agenda, and that was the discussion about departmental schedule modifications for the Sheriff and Detention Center, which allows them to have flexibility in their scheduling without any negative financial impact to employees by taking advantage of that schedule modification. Depending on which schedule is opted for, there could possibly be some negative decrementing of employee salaries, and the Board agreed by consensus to bridge that gap and make that hole by a lump sum payment for base salaries. This gives different options for scheduling, helps with recruitment and retention. And all of those items were agreed by consensus.
Okay, thank you very much, Ms. Mole. Any further discussion? Is there a motion to approve our consent agenda?
I'll make a motion, we approve the consent agenda.
Motion by Commissioner Brown. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. There are no announcements of any vacancies occurring on boards or commissions. There are likewise no appointments to boards or commissions this evening. Under unfinished business, we have one item, and under new business, we have three items. Unfinished business, I believe, County Manager Mole, you're going to share with us some of the details on the market study.
Yes, correct. If the Board will recall, the first time that we presented this to the Board and had conversation was at our fall/winter retreat, which was back in February. We had hired a consultant, a third-party consultant, to come in and do a market study of all county positions and employees in those positions. This was a very comprehensive market study that was conducted. We all know that the market has been very volatile as far as employment and the great resignation that's been occurring has made it very, very difficult to hire and to retain good qualified staff. So we hired a consultant to come in and do a market analysis of our salaries and look at our comparisons that are Board-approved as far as our comparables. Those comparables included other counties our size, it included municipalities, it included counties that surround us, and it actually, it also included the state of North Carolina because all of those are competitors in comparisons to us and our salaries. There were several different facets of this, and we've talked about this and looked at various different options, and I commend the Board for your due diligence in exploring all the different options. So what it does is currently we have one pay plan, and every county employee is on that one pay plan. What this, what this new market study does is it divides our staffing into three different pay plans. It's the Series 100, which is the public safety pay plan, Series 200, which is the specialty pay plan, and then Series 300, which is the administrative pay plan. And what that does is it groups employees, so it's more of an apples-to-apple comparison regarding the job responsibilities, duties responsibilities, and what determines which pay plan an employee falls in. It all goes back to their job description and what the primary focus of their job description is. Is their primary focus specialty-type work that requires very specific licensing trades, things of that nature? Is it public safety-related or administrative? So by going through all job descriptions and determining which pay plan employees fall in, those pay plans were created. And what it does is it gives you the better, a better ability to analyze by pay plan at a time instead of collectively as a whole. So that's one part of the market study, is dividing those up into three different pay plans. It also increased the differential, and I'm going to get a little technical, but I feel like we need to have this on the record. It also increased the differential between grades. Our differential was 4.6%, and it increases that differential to 4.8%. The goal is to ultimately get to 5%. So the recommendation from the consultant to the Board is when you do another market study and do another salary review, the recommendation is at that point to go to that 5%. And what that is, is a 5% difference between one grade and another. So we've gone the step of 4.6 to 4.8 in this market study with the understanding there's one more step that needs to happen going from 4.8 to 5 in the next study. It also increases the range between the minimum and the maximum. Our pay plans has a grade, and then it has a minimum of that grade, a midpoint of the grade, and a maximum of the grade. Currently, our spread between the minimum and the maximum is 55.5%, and it moves that to 56%. So it spreads that out a little bit. So then, once that was done, the consultant went and looked at every employee that we had and looked at their years of experience in their current position. Not years with the county, but years of experience in that specific position. And that's important because that's how, that's how you can get your comparison. So when the consultant did that, they applied what they call a compa ratio, and it all is based on midpoint. And depending on the years of experience, they're a little bit below midpoint or they're above midpoint, depending on their years of experience in that position. So, and that's, that's important because what it does is it takes employees from the place that they are on the current pay scale and makes sure that they're in a similar position on the new pay scale. So that way someone doesn't automatically revert back to, you know, lower than where they were on the current pay scale, and it takes into consideration the years of experience. So that is, that's kind of the different components of the pay scale. It looked at the full-time salaries, their years of experience, and looked at what our competitors are from the Board-approved list, and then came up with a recommendation for each specific employee as far as what their market salary should be. Some are, and they're kind of, it's just all dependent on market and depending upon the years of experience in that position and what the market's paying for that position. So it was- So, it was a very, very comprehensive salary study. It has taken a lot of time and a lot of effort, but it is something that we're seeing every day. When we see people that are leaving and we're hearing what they're leaving for and what our competitors are paying, we've all known that, you know, we're a little behind. So, with that being said, we've sat and we've talked to the Board individually, kind of talked about this, we've looked at various different options, but I do believe that we have a consensus with the Board to implement the market study as presented by the consultant. There were a couple little tweaks that we had to make with that, because we did notice that when we split, we split everything up into three different pay plans. One pay plan was different, so what we did, because the lowest grade in that pay plan was a higher grade than the others, and when we did that, it changed the numbers. So, we've corrected that, we've modified that, we've gone back and taken all of it into consideration. So, it does not matter what pay plan employees are in, they're all starting off at the same place. All the grades have the same minimum, mid, and maximum, but what it does is it groups them based on their primary function of their job duties, and that's important to be able to track and keep track of. So, those are all the different components of the pay plan, what the consultant did, what the consultant has presented to the Board for recommendations, and what I would respectfully ask for the Board to do is consider implementing this pay plan prior to July first. What I would like to ask the Board to do is to implement this with the payroll period beginning May the fifth. This will give staff time to input all of these new salaries into the system, but it will also get our employees and their salaries to market, so hopefully, it will help retain our employees. What it will also do is help with recruitment, because, and I'm going to pick on the sheriff for a minute, I talked to him the other day, and they have, I think, forty-two openings between Sheriff and Detention Center. So, implementing this market study will get that entry-level salary where it should be so they can get competitive and get those positions filled. We do have several positions that are open; we're having difficulty recruiting for those positions. So, it will help us get these positions filled, and it will also help us retain our staff by paying them the market rate of what they're worth, quite frankly. I can't say enough about our staff. You've seen several of them here tonight, being recognized for proclamations. They work hard, they do a great job, and they should be rewarded for their efforts and have their salaries adjusted to what the market rate is for those salaries. The cost of implementing this prior to July first, we've looked at the budget, and because we have so many openings, it's sad to say, but because we have so many openings, we have enough lapse salary funds that we can cover the cost of implementing this market study with the May fifth pay period. We can cover it with lapse salary money, and there's no additional funding that we're requesting going into and to finish out this fiscal year. Again, that's sad to say, but that's how many unfilled positions we have that are open. So, with that, we've talked multiple times, and we've looked at the pay plans, but I would respectfully request the Board to consider implementing the market study as presented by the consultant. There is one revision to the administrative pay plan, which I talked to each one of the Board members about, so that will be one exception to the recommendation from the consultant, but other than that, to recommend that approval by the Board to be effective with the May fifth pay plan or payroll.
Thank you, Ms. Moll. That was a great tutorial.
Thank you.
Without notes.
I feel like I can do this in my sleep. I've been looking and working on this for a couple months now.
Yeah. Are there comments from Commissioners?
Well, I just want to say that we've waited a little long to get this done, and we've worked hard at it, but, you know, I'd like to have it done earlier, but as people heard you say, you know this up and down, and you've went through it, and the people of Barrow County need to know that you took yourself out of it, so.
I did, yes.
That's admirable for you, but you didn't have to, but you did because you were doing the study, so.
I don't ever want it to be said that I pushed for this for any personal gain whatsoever. I pushed for this because it's the right thing for the staff. They deserve to be paid what the market rate is for their efforts and their job and all the good that they have done for this community and this county.
I would also like to add to Commissioner Brown's comments as well, that outstanding number of hours that you put into this, you took everyone's comments, concerns, you researched, you looked, you did numbers. I didn't realize that someone could do as much math as you have done, and you could spend your entire weekend coming up with solutions to situations that were unimaginable from a standpoint of adding and subtracting and fixing and adjusting. So, I'm excited to get this done, ready to roll, and get this in place. So appreciative of all of our employees of the county, and extremely appreciative that we have a county manager such as you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Norman, do you want to add anything?
James, I'm just proud of our manager and all the staff. They do a good job, and they've done a good job as long as I've been, this is my last year, of course, of twenty years. They've done a good job the whole time, and I just appreciate them. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Hough, do you have any comments?
I just wanted to say that, you know, I appreciate the administration and the department heads that participated. We did ask a lot of questions after the initial presentation by the company that did this market study, and the reason that's so important is because during the thorough, comprehensive process, getting feedback and bouncing ideas off of the manager and administration and department heads is to make sure we get it right. And it's a shame that we can pay for it, I guess, from lapse salaries, but that shows that we are repurposing money, but the reason that's so important, talking to the sheriff and others in the county, the investment we make in equipment, training, if we lose these people, we're losing thousands of dollars, and that's an item that won't show up on a balance sheet anywhere. But the investments that we're making, we're servicing twenty-six county departments that provide services to the citizens of the county. So, it took a little long, but I think being thorough and comprehensive and the manager getting answers to our questions and working with us, hopefully not pulling their hair out, but getting it right was more important than getting it fast, from my perspective, because if we did the market study and didn't adequately reward the employees so they can be recruited and retained, we've wasted our time. So, I think what we're hopefully doing, and through further budget processes, looking at continued things that we can do to be competitive and retain and recruit employees for all these positions, I think that, you know, we have an obligation to provide adequate funding for the manager and the department heads to adequately fill qualified positions with qualified people, because they're servicing our citizens of a hundred and eighty-some thousand people, and this is a business, and I think we're being smart in our due diligence of getting it right. So, I'll make a motion when you're ready, unless you have further comments, but I just wanted to say thank you to everybody. I appreciate the feedback and the patience of getting all the questions answered that we all had, you know, because that was important, because our goal is to recruit, retain, and have adequate people to fill these positions.
I'll just say, you know, we've asked our employees to support us in our county's goals and objectives, our mission, our vision, to make Aridale County the best place to live and work and raise a family. And in order to do that, you've got to have sufficient income, you've got to be able to encourage the private sector and to expand, and our citizens to have their needs met and their quality of life issues addressed. There are services that cover the waterfront, and if it weren't for the dedicated efforts of our employees, then we wouldn't be as attractive a place for businesses to locate and people to move to, and without that growth, we wouldn't be sitting here talking about raising income, because we would be trying to divide up a static or a diminishing pie. So, our ability to grow economically and to manage and shape that growth is contributed to by every single department and all of our employees, understanding that, you know, being efficient and effective and customer-focused is what we're about. And so, it really makes us happy to be able to recognize that dedication of our workforce across the board. So, I heartily support this salary adjustment, and as has been alluded to, we normally receive these reports and then factor that into our next year's budget, and we've moved that forward by two months, because we just think we need to invest as much as we can in our people. So, that being said, is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the market study and review as mentioned by the manager with effective May fifth, 2022 payroll, and with any changes and modifications we've discussed with the manager.
Motion by Commissioner Hough. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. There is no public comment period this evening. We have three items under new business. I believe, Commissioner Hough, you've got a couple?
Yes. I wanted to ask the Board during our upcoming budget situation, item number one, last year we talked about doing something for the fire departments and rescue squads, if possible, through ARPA monies or any other identified pots, but I think what I'd like for us to do is talk about some ways we can help them with the increased inflation cost of fuels or things like that, or any other need they may have. You know, we talked about in the budget process last year, you know, we were able to do something, you know, for our own people, but we didn't qualify because the firemen and rescue people were not employees of the county. So, but I think we still need to look at during our budget process, a potential way we can help them with the fuel cost and different things they may have a need for. So, I'd like for us to have that discussion during the budget. And the second thing is, I want to just say, bring up an item that's been on the agenda since I've been on the Board. This Board and previous Boards have always had a desire to do more with recreation, to get kids involved with activities to keep them out of trouble, because we always talked about, and I remember Commissioner Norman making a comment years ago, that if we're not going to get the kids something to do, we've built the jail too small, because they're going to get in trouble if they're not having a focused outlet. So, I would like for us to look at in the budget, we've not been able to find a revenue stream over the years to help do more programming, so we've transitioned away from that, and, you know, last year we had an opportunity where we're talking about transitioning our charter to another organization that's been sharing that with us, but to me, it was sad because it gave us a finality that we're probably done with programming unless we get a revenue stream that we can identify. But I'd like for us to really look at in the budget situation, all of us elected officials have had conversations over the years with volunteer groups and organizations, trying to help get more kids involved, creating a revenue stream where we could be more of a governing entity for the volunteer organizations and help with programming, but we've not been able to do that. So, at a minimum, I'd like for us to look at ways, if possible, that we can help, whether that last year we did a grant situation through Michelle and them to try to help get more kids eligible to participate with the volunteer organizations, and so I want us to really look at that. I'm saddened to say we've not been able to do more with those organizations, but I want to say on our behalf that we appreciate all the volunteer organizations do. There's a lot of work and effort that goes into the kids around this county, and a lot of these volunteers don't have children anymore on these teams, but they continue to give their time and money and love to these kids. So, I'd like for us to try, if we can, to participate monetarily with these organizations to make sure every kid that wants to participate in some activity can, if they cannot afford registration fees, equipment, things like that. So, I just wanted to talk to Beth about it and you guys individually, about trying to talk about this during the budget process and see if there's a way we can do more with the organizations, because they're out there trying to do all they can for these kids in the county, and if we don't figure out a way to help these organizations help these kids, the sheriff's jail is going to be too small, and I really believe that. So, that's all I'm asking for those two items to be added to the budget in May conversations and to see what we can come up with, with potential solutions for those.
Thank you, Commissioner Hough. No formal action needs to be taken on that, duly noted as we work up our budget.
Budget agenda.
Commissioner Brown?
I do have a motion. Before I put it in, I'd like to say that we got this five million dollar grant from the state for the fairgrounds, and we need to show them, after talking to them, we've got to get started on something, so I'd like to put a motion in that we go ahead and get an estimate, three estimates from three different people to clear the property that needs to be cleared, and that way, we can see what we're doing and we can spend a little bit of money. It's about, it's probably going to be between a hundred and two hundred thousand dollars, but I'd like to make that motion.
Okay.
That we acquired three estimates.
Okay, do we know what we need to clear?
Yeah. I mean, it's all the trees on there.
All the trees?
All the trees that are on the little part are all pines.
Yeah. Well, I think we need to take a look at it. Certainly, there's a good bit that will need to be cleared, but we also need to have a plan before we start clearing, I think.
Well, we've got to get an estimate, though. If we wait too long, we're going to, you know, they're going to maybe take our five million back.
Have you and the manager identified the part on the property? I think y'all put some time into it. Have you had discussions on the part that Commissioner Brown's talking about?
Looked at about twenty acres, just that twenty acres that was going to be cleared by Children's Hope Alliance. If the Board will remember, before we purchased that property, there was a plan to clear that prior to us purchasing the property, and we decided to hold off on that. So, that property that was already in that plan with Children's Hope Alliance to clear, because what they do is they harvested the wood and then reseeded, but instead of reseeding, it would just be harvesting the wood based on topography for the time being.
I certainly don't have a problem getting estimates about, I just think we need to have a clear understanding of, because once you take a tree down, it's down, and.
Most of the trees, they're not real trees, and most of them are shrub trees from where they did do it before, and we do have to stay, if that creek's a live creek, we have to stay back by law, I think it's fifteen feet from the creek, leave the trees on both sides, so.
So, basically, your motion is to get three estimates and come back, talk about the scope of the job, right?
Okay. Any further discussion? The motion is by Commissioner Brown to get three estimates to clear property adjacent to the fairgrounds, basically that eighteen acres or maybe another couple. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close like sign.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Okay, county managers report. I think it'll be a short one, right?
Nothing to report. It's budget time.
Shortest you can get.
Three words, okay. Let's see if you can get down to one.
I can do that.
Okay, we did have a closed session between our pre-agenda and the seven o'clock session to discuss matters related to attorney-client under North Carolina General Statute One Forty-three dash three eighteen point one-one subsection A three, also economic development pursuant to North Carolina General Statute One Forty-three dash three eighteen point one-one subsection A four, and property acquisition pursuant to North Carolina General Statute One Forty-three dash three eighteen point one-one subsection A five. There is one item to report out as an action item under economic development. There is one item to report out as an action item under economic development. Leave. Is there a motion on that?
That's the one for me, right?
It's attorney-client.
Yeah. The motion to authorize the county manager to sign the ball attorney-client.
Yeah, that's correct. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close like sign. Motion carries unanimously. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I think we have another closed item, closed session item.
We have two more closed session.
Okay.
We have to go back into closed session.
What were they?
They were property acquisition.
Oh, we need to go back into closed session. Move into a closed session as said pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11 subsection A.5 for property acquisition.
Okay, so one other item that we need to discuss is the Department of Transportation is looking at widening Turnersburg Highway. There are turn lanes that are planned to be put in on the Health Department side of Turnersburg. They're widening on the other side, but there are turn lanes and they're going to go in front of the Health Department. So they have submitted us an offer. And if you look, they've kind of done an analysis and had an appraisal of the property and what, in their determination it's worth. The problem is if you look at the map, it is putting the road right up against the building. And right there in the front of that building are our offices. It's gonna, the bollards that we put up when we, you know, all of that's going to come out during the construction process is going to make getting into the Health Department off Turnersburg, because that's the only way we get into and out of the Health Department. They're on Turnersburg Highway. It's going to make it very difficult to get in and out of that facility. And quite frankly, with the road coming that close to that building, it's a little concerning having offices right there. So I wanted to bring this to the Board's attention and let you know that we did receive this. I'm a little concerned about what this is going to do to that facility and the safety of that facility with it going so close.
You don't think they'll put barriers up there?
They're not proposing. There's not a proposal to put barriers from what I understand. So.
I'm excited to want to give us.
It's around 70,000.
Is that all?
Yes, sir. That's what we said. And that's the concern now. If the Board will recall, our plan and what we've been saving MedMax funds for is to build a sister facility to DSS on East Side Drive at the DSS facility. So we may need to look at that option sooner rather than later because of this.
We need 10 thousand, huh?
I know. I agree.
If they do what they're proposing, it devalues potentially that property.
Correct.
But okay, so what legal right do we have to say no or what's the options?
Well, that was one of the things that we wanted to talk to Ms. Valdez about to see what our options are. Can we?
You can't do these things.
Well, we want to, well, yeah, they could.
Sometimes you can talk to them about buying the whole property.
How time sensitive is this? Is this something that you can just share with us now and then she can put some thoughts into it?
I think that's probably the best thing to do.
That's what I say, you brought it towards our attention. How about gives an opportunity for Ms. Valdez to come up with some, after reading through a lot of research or a lot of information here.
There's a lot that goes into it. So we just want to bring the Board's attention to this and then ask Ms. Valdez to look at it and discuss options.
I'd rather her have a time to go through, give us some options.
So can we just table this, Mr. Chairman, until the next meeting? Give them opportunities to talk to attorney and give us some recommendations?
We'll put it on the.
Next meeting agenda.
Put it on the closed agenda.
Fifteenth, I think.
April fifteenth.
Nineteenth.
Nineteenth.
Nineteenth. Nineteenth. Okay.
We can add that to the closed session for attorney-client.
For attorney-client.
Okay.
Census area number.
That works. I just information right now.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make it work.
All of them, please say hi.
Hi.
Do we need these back?
Thank you, Mark.
Good evening, Mr. Norman.
Or just, do we need those back?